Yeah.
Good evening.
And also I invite Sandhya to translate for Pashto.
Good evening and thank you for having me this evening. And. Yeah, so as we continue to reach Bangalore city, God is entrusting us with the uh the place, so many thousands can come and worship him. So any of you who are in Bangalore, visiting Bangalore, you're most welcome to come and attend one of our worship services.
The Bangalore Prantham. Okay.
Let's quickly get into the word. The word that comes to my heart this evening for you is the word faith.
I think.
And I want you to turn with me to Hebrews chapter eleven verses eight to twelve.
Hebrews chapter eleven verses eight to tell if Mrs. Sandhya can read that in Telugu it will be nice. Okay, okay. Abraham.
The Bible says that Abraham and Sarah obeyed God and went to the place they were going to receive as a inheritance. They were able to trust God for their future. I don't know how many of you this evening are in a place where you need to trust God for your future.
I think.
Hebrews eleven six also says it is impossible to please God apart from faith. And how do we define faith in verse one? Faith is the substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen. So faith in God is foundational if you want to please God. You see there's a difference between fact and faith. See, it is a fact that you are all attending this Zoom call. It is a fact. It is a fact that I am speaking to you. But only by faith I can believe that you are all listening to me. And that kind of faith is something that is beyond sight. That even though we cannot see, we know it is there. Even though we cannot see, we believe that it's there. Even though we cannot see, we trust that it's there. Because faith sees the invisible. Faith hears the inaudible. And faith attempts the impossible. I don't know how many of you have been to Disney World, but I had the privilege of going last year. Disney World opened in nineteen seventy two. But when Disney World opened, the founder Walt Disney had already died. And as they were dedicating that magnificent park, his wife was sitting on the platform. A man who was sitting next to her leaned over to her and said, it is such a shame that Walt Disney did not live to see this place. But this is what Walt Disney's wife said. Walt Disney saw this in faith, that is why it is here. Even though he did not live to walk on the park, but because he saw it in faith, there is today a magnificent theme park. That is why real faith is being sure of what we hope for. And being certain of what we do not see. And faith pleases God. Very strongly this afternoon, in my prayer time, I felt many of you need to grow in your faith. Many of you need to demonstrate your faith. Look at Hebrews eleven six one more time. Without faith, it is impossible to please God. God is looking for your demonstration of faith. Maybe you're stuck in a bad marriage, maybe you want your business to go listed, maybe you want your ministry to expand, maybe you want your children to come up in life, maybe you are praying for some personal breakthrough, whatever it is, until you demonstrate your faith, you are not pleasing God. So no matter what else you do well or how well you do it, if you do not believe God, if you do not trust God, if you do not walk in faith and demonstrate your faith, you will never please God. I want you to understand that life's number one purpose is to please God. Because nothing else matters in life if you don't please God. So if faith is something that pleases God, then I need to be a man and woman of faith, walking in a way where I believe and trust God, that all his promises are yes and amen through Christ Jesus. So faith is the sign of a healthy heart. Remember that statement. Faith is the sign of a healthy heart. See, when your eye responds to light, you know that your eye is right. When your ear responds to sound, you know that your ear is right. In the same way, when your heart responds to God by faith, you know your heart is right. Um, the first step in pleasing God. Now I told you this evening that you need to demonstrate your faith. Many of you this evening who are joining us on call, the Lord showed me that God is looking for a demonstration of faith. So whatever you're believing God for, whatever you're trusting God for, whatever you're praying for, God will release that into your life, but God is looking for a demonstration of your faith. So if faith pleases God, what is the first step in pleasing God? Please note down. Look at Hebrews eleven verse six, the second part it says, without faith it is impossible to please God, for he who comes to God must believe that he is. I want you to focus on those words. He must believe that he is. You must believe that he is. That is the first step in pleasing God. Some of you this evening, you have to believe that God is there even though you cannot see him. Some of you this evening must believe that God is there even though you cannot hear him. Some of you must believe this evening that God is there even though you cannot feel him. And some of you this evening must believe that God is there even though you cannot touch him. I read a story about a father in the Bahamas Islands. And his house was on fire. When he rushed out of the door, he realized that his young son was still trapped in the burning house. And because it was a two-story house, there was no way to go back inside and the little boy was standing at his window sill. He was only five years old. When his father looked at him, he said, "Son, jump and I'll catch you." And it was dark and the little boy said, "Daddy, I can't see you." But the father said, "I know, son, but I can see you, so just jump." And that's the same thing with God when it comes to our faith. Faith comes to God believing that he sees even when we cannot see. He hears even when we cannot hear. And he knows even when we do not know. So God knows the needs that you have. God knows your desires. God knows your dreams. God knows what is in your heart and God desires to and he delights in that he 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 delights in your desires, but are you willing to believe that he is? You must believe that he is. Even though you cannot hear, you must believe that he is there. You cannot see, you must believe that he is there. You cannot feel, you must believe that he is there. You cannot touch, you must believe that he is there. You must believe that he is working all things together for good. You must believe that he is. That is the first step in pleasing God. And look at the same verse, the last part it says, he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. What is the meaning of that verse? He rewards everyone who searches for him. So the meaning of that verse is the more of God you seek, the more of God you will find. How many of you are in a season where you are searching God diligently? Look at what is this. He is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. He is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. And sometimes I believe that when we want more of God and seek him diligently, he rewards us. You see the scientific mind says, show me and I will believe it. But the spiritual mind says, believe in me and I will show you. So scientific mind says, show me and I will believe it. And the spiritual mind says, believe in me and I will show you. So what are you trusting God for? If you can believe it, God can do it. Because faith is a set of eyes through which we see the world. Faith is a set of eyes by which we see the world. Faith is beyond sight. Faith is vision. There's a difference between sight and vision. It is it is a set of glasses through which we perceive the reality of the world. So faith is a way of seeing. So God is opening your eyes of faith this evening. Amen? Number one, he wants you to believe that he is there. You must believe that he is working. You must believe that he is for you. You must believe that he is orchestrating all things. You must believe that God is working behind the scenes even though you cannot see it. And secondly, you must diligently seek him. Because diligent people who diligently seek him are rewarded for their faith. See, the Bible says he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. See this passage in Hebrews eleven, there are so many names mentioned, there's Abel and Enoch and Noah and Moses and Samson and Jephthah and Rehob and Ruth and so many people, but when you look at the life of Enoch. And the Bible says Enoch walked with God for how many years? Three hundred years. And imagine in three hundred years, his faith must have been tested, his faith must have been tried many times, but there is no evidence that Enoch let down or lowered his shield of faith. And look at verse five, the last four words, it says, Enoch pleased God. He pleased God by the way he talked. He pleased God by the way he lived. And he pleased God by the way he worked. And that is very important for us today. Because faith is seen in our manner of life. The Bible says he had this testimony that he pleased God. So Enoch was a man who believed that God is and he was a man who was richly rewarded. How? The Bible says he was taken away and he did not see death. And many of you need to diligently seek God in this season of your life. And Enoch was a man who the Bible says diligently sought God. Remember this statement, the years of seeking are the years of growing. The years of seeking are the years of growing. The years of seeking are the years of growing. Somebody needs to hear that this evening. Day after day as Enoch sought God and day after day as Enoch fellowshiped with God and commune with God and walked with God. He was growing in grace and knowledge. And straight away he walked into the heavenly presence of God. Hallelujah. What an amazing testimony of a man who believed that God is and who was a man who diligently sought God and the Bible says Enoch was rewarded. I think this man's life should really inspire us today. Abraham and Sarah's life must really inspire us today. Because these were people, men and women of faith, who trusted God with their future. They believed that he is not a man to lie nor a son of man to change his mind. And they believe that if they diligently seek him, they will be richly rewarded. So I want to encourage you this evening. Without faith, you cannot please God. Thank you. God is looking for a demonstration of your faith in this season. Mountains will move. Red seas will part. Jericho walls will fall down. If you are a man and woman who stands in faith and demonstrates faith. Do you believe that he is for you? Do you believe that he is not a man to lie? Do you believe that he is not against you? Do you believe that no weapon formed against you will prosper? Do you believe that you are a sign and wonder? Do you believe that he has blessed you with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places? And do you believe that under the finished work of Christ, you are blessed, you are prosperous and you are peaceful?